To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Could you call the roll, please?
The next roll call, Casa Grande is excused. Demas.
Here.
Calhoun.
Here.
Osenda.
Here.
McCullar.
Here.
Wells.
Here.
Mayor Terry.
Yes.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the citizen comments on any subject except those items scheduled for a public hearing. We have one public hearing item, and that has to do with the sale of the parcel in conjunction with the airport. So if you want to speak on that, wait till the public hearing opportunity. Other than that, those who have signed in will be given the first opportunity to speak. Time is limited to three minutes per speaker. Thirty-six minutes total time, and if you could say inside or outside city limits. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up for citizen comments?
Yes, ma'am. The first person is Patrick Messmer.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Patrick Messmer, Inside City Limits. I'm no longer the president of the Seward Public Employees Association. This is Donnie Lane. He's our new president. I just wanted to introduce him so he'd get to know you guys. And I'd like to thank council and administration. It's been a good run, and I appreciate everything you guys have done for us, the employees.
Thank you so much.
Pat's certainly not going too far. I need him. I've worked really closely with Pat for the last year with the union, and, you know, I'm not looking to come in and make any huge ratifying changes. A lot of the same goal as what Pat has, you know, to be in the voice of our employees. And I just want to say I really look forward to working with each and every one of you and getting to know each and every one of you over these next couple of years. So, again, look forward to working with each of you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, has anyone else signed in?
Yes, ma'am. Next is Tim McDonald.
Tim McDonald, Inside City Limits. Pleased to have a beautiful day out there, and summer's coming. I haven't been too involved, but I did hear the report on your utility audit. And you guys are waiting for more information. I heard that, and that's great. I think that's the... I also recommend that you audit the leases that have been going on for the last 10 years, especially since our city manager, an assistant city manager that just left in a hurry, had been on a very busy schedule for two years with the leases, and they're all over the place, and the prices are all replaced. So I think that you should do a forensic audit on the leases. And I think you should also do a forensic audit on the contracts. You know, you just let out a $20 million contract for the electrical out there, big improvement. You're putting $4.4 million, or at least that's the total cost. I realize the city is only half of that, or a little less, for the boat launch replacement. These are big numbers, okay? And people need to feel confident that the money's being spent correctly, and it's not being wasted, and there's not a bunch of pork in there, because that's what it sure looks like. And a lot of this stuff we need, I know that, we're growing. We are growing. And the other thing I want to touch on is this idea of the housing problem that everybody's been talking about and wrestling to do with it. I don't see it as a housing problem at all. We got plenty of houses. They're all empty. Over 50% of our houses are owned by non-residents that don't live here. They're empty all winter, and then in the summer they come sometimes, and sometimes they don't. I looked them up when I was running. Every one of them, and it's like, close to 60% are not owned by the people that live in Seward, from Anchorage to the whole rest of the world. And so it doesn't matter how many houses you build, three out of every four of them are going to be bought by somebody that wants a summer home in Seward. We're that popular. So it's a people problem. And the only answer is, this city needs bodies. You know, I don't like the way it's going as far as politically. I trust you. There's some great people. Our mayor is a wonderful person. Doesn't matter. It looks like a business oligarchy. Our mayor works for the biggest landlord in town, and they're going to put $50 million bucks into the dock. I realize it's all stand-off. Doesn't matter. You know, the old saying about, you get what you pay for. How much are we paying you guys? Nothing. You know, you get a pittance. I think we need to remap the whole government, include the people that are Sewardites, whether they, you know, out there, there's a lot of people, maybe not all of them want to be, but everybody needs to be educated, and we need to iron out the things. Sure, there's going to be a lot of problems, but we need people, and you're not doing it.
Thank you. Anyone else sign to speak?
Yes, ma'am. Next is Carol Griswold.
Hello. I'm Carol Griswold, Inside City Limits. I am opposed to the Hemlock Street subdivision that will replace a popular campground and wildlife habitat in Forest Acres with a high-density housing development in a quiet neighborhood. No community discussion or outreach to Forest Acres residents occurred prior to the city making this decision. The first public hearing will be on the replat and rezone at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on May 3 at 7:00 PM. I think this partial should be rezoned to park and maintained as a campground and bike park. Pacific Resurrection Bay Seafoods has apparently been using city property for their plant for decades without paying. I sent an email to council administration with a recorded deed showing that the plant is on city-owned, not privately-owned property. This was noted by the Borough Title Examiner for the assessing department. No one has replied. The company should be paying the city for its use of city land. I remain opposed to the location of the washdown pad on the north end of the harbor next to the water, surrounded by businesses, sidewalks, and street. This is not a car wash. Toxic bottom paint is being removed by pressure washing. Best management practices recommend siding washdown pads as far as the water from possible, as possible. Thank you for your consideration of my concerns.
Madam Mayor, last sign in to speak is Kellyanne Cabaretta.
Hello, Kellyanne Cabaretta. I apologize for how I'm presenting myself, but I'm just here to say that regarding the new business agenda item for the liquor license transfer of number 1130, that my husband and I are really excited to continue the tradition of Thorns with a sense of reverence and respect, and creating a community space for people to gather, eat, and drink responsibly.
Madam Clerk, no one else has signed in?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move down to the approval of the agenda and consent agenda, and I need a motion in a second.
I move the approval of the agenda and the consent agenda.
One second.
I'll start off. I would like to pull Resolution 2022-055 off the consent agenda. And then, if there's no objections, I'd like to add Resolution 2022-0602, the consent agenda.
Please, Chair.
I'd like to add Resolution 2022-029 to the consent agenda.
Oh, it should be 59.
Oh, it's 59.
Yeah, it's 59.
Oh, it should be. You're right. Okay. Resolution 2022-059 to the consent agenda. Are there any other changes?
Madam Clerk, I think we're ready for a vote, please.
Voting on tonight's agenda and consent agenda. Demas.
Yes.
Wells.
Yes.
McCullar.
Yes.
Calhoun.
Yes.
Osenda.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Yes.
Your agenda and consent agenda are approved, and approved on tonight's consent agenda: Resolution 2022-056, accepting and appropriating a humane society of the United States travel scholarship in the amount of $1,500. Resolution 2022-057, accepting and appropriating grant funds from the Girls' Steam Ahead with the Nassau Implementation Stipend in the amount of $400. Resolution 2022-058, repealing Resolution 2021-101, and authorizing the city manager to purchase from Virginia Transformer Corporation three high-voltage transformers in a not-to-exceed amount of $2,664,716, including freight charges of $298,000 for installation in the Fort Raymond and Line substations as operating funds. Resolution 2022-059, authorizing the city manager to purchase a 2022 Chevrolet Silverado 2500 crew cab from Chevrolet of South Anchorage to replace the truck of the electric line foreman, using the state procurement process in a not-to-exceed amount of $65,899 in appropriating funds. And Resolution 2022-060, repealing Resolution 2021-135, and authorizing the city manager to purchase three 2023 Chevrolet Tahoe police package vehicles from Switcard Auto Group under the State of Alaska Fleet Vehicle Contract, and with associated outfitting and police-specific equipment from Alaska Safety and the Pringer in an amount not to exceed $59,033.34 per vehicle, for total cost of $177,100 in appropriating funds. You have also approved the March 29, 2021 regular meeting minutes, March 29, 2021 special meeting minutes from the second special meeting that day, April 11, city council special meeting minutes to April 11, regular meeting minutes. You have recommended Planning and Zoning Commissioner Troy Stags to the Kenai Peninsula Borough Mayor for appointment to the KPE Planning Commission, with a term to expire July 2023. And finally, you have no objection to the transfer of ownership for the liquor license number 1130 beverage dispensary from Thorns Showcase Lounge LLC to Flamingo Cocktail Lounge LLC.
Madam Clerk, they're correct in the minutes, but those are all 2022 minutes.
Correct.
Oh.
Oh, it does.
Yeah, but they're correct in the minutes itself. I just wanted to note it for that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I didn't even realize.
Yeah, you're good. Great. Thank you. Next on the agenda is proclamations and awards. The first one is National Historic Preservation Month proclamation and... Madam Chair, please, did you want to accept this HP for Historic Preservation Month?
I haven't accepted yet.
Would you mind? That would be great. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability; whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds; whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us; and whereas people-saving places is the theme for Preservation Month for this May, sponsored by the National Trust for Historic Preservation; and whereas over the course of the past year, the Seward Historic Preservation Commission has contributed to local historic preservation activities and projects, such as the creation of the Historic Walking Tour, nomination of historic preservation awards, nomination of structures to the Historic Properties Inventory List, public outreach and education, and the development of historic preservation guidelines and best practices. Now therefore, I, Kristi Terry, Mayor of the City of Seward, do hereby proclaim May 2022 National Historic Preservation Month, and do call upon the community to join their fellow citizens across the U.S. in recognizing and participating in this special observance. And I will give you this proclamation.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mayor, would you like to say a few words? Thank you, and thank you for your support for our local history as well as our national history.
Great. Thank you. So next, I'm going to read this, the Army Corps of Engineers, they are going to be here with their conference starting next week, and the city manager and I will join them, and will, I'll present this proclamation to them during the opening of their conference. So, whereas the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Pacific Ocean Division provides vital public engineering services in times of peace and war to strengthen our nation's security; and whereas the Pacific Ocean Division is a team of dedicated professionals who take pride in serving as the engineering and construction agent of choice for the Pacific region; whereas the Pacific Oceans Division, Alaska District, Far East District, Tonalulu District, and Japan Engineering District strengthen our nation's security by building and maintaining America's infrastructure; whereas the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers played a key role in rebuilding Seward after the 1964 earthquake and tsunami; whereas in 1940, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers constructed the first Alaska flood control project by diverting Lowell Creek waters into a half-mile-long, 10-foot-diameter tunnel through Bear Mountain; whereas the Army Corps of Engineers is partnering with the City of Seward to design and engineer a new tunnel solution to mitigate the 80-year-old, undersized, and high-maintenance tunnel in order to better protect the life and safety of the city residents. As a result of this collaboration, legislatures award $185 million to the U.S. ACE for construction of a new 18-foot-diameter diversion tunnel and infrastructure; and whereas the Pacific Ocean Division provides vital public engineering services to the City of Seward that energizes the economy and reduce risk to the community from natural disasters; and whereas the Pacific Ocean Division has chosen Seward, Alaska as a location for its annual meeting in 2022; and whereas this meeting will stimulate the ideas and actions that are necessary for the Pacific Ocean Division to continue strengthening our nation's security and infrastructure into the future. Now therefore, I, Kristi Terry, Mayor of the City of Seward, do hereby welcome the Pacific Ocean Division of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to Seward for their annual meeting for the week of May 2, 2022, and thank them for their service. So it will be great to have them here, and we also have a chance to meet with them in D.C. So what a privilege to have them here, especially with the auspicious new tunnel that we'll be getting. So the timing's amazing. So next, we have a roast for, oh, I'm sorry, a proclamation for Matt Chase, which I stole that roast idea from my colleague sitting on the dais. So come up here if you dare. It's actually all nice things, because we did not quiz your coworkers. So whereas, Matt Chase joined the City of Seward on March 31, 1988, serving in the City of Seward for over 34 years. Whereas in 1988, Matt started with the City of Seward working in the harbor as a harbor worker, left for another journey in his life and/or career. Whereas Matt then returned to Seward in 2000, where he was on-call working with program training with the harbor department. Whereas Matt moved into a permanent position in 2004 to harbor worker 2, then up to harbor worker 3 in August of 2011. Whereas Matt then took his current position as the deputy harbor master in 2015. Whereas Matt has been instrumental in maintaining the city's status as an Alaska clean harbor, and has expanded and improved our used oil program, which recycles discarded oil to heat city buildings. Whereas Matt's dedication to the expansion and improvements to the Seward Marine Industrial Center, working to clean up debris and derelict vessels, and recruiting businesses for the yard in the North Dock. And whereas with Matt's oversight at Smith, keeping the yards clean and orderly, there's been tremendous growth from his guidance and knowledge, making it a busy, successful shipyard it is today. Whereas Matt not only provides guidance out in the field... Are you blushing yet? But has been a great asset in problem-solving and keeping order around the harbor. Whereas Matt has always been a team player, is a respected colleague, and will sorely be missed by everyone at the city. Now therefore, I, Kristi Terry, Mayor of the City of Seward, Alaska, do hereby thank Matt Chase for his many years of service, his numerous contributions to the City of Seward, and wish him all the best in his return. And you're not getting a handshake, you're getting...
Well, for one of the few times, I'm speechless, but I'll try to... Well, I can't find words to thank you guys enough. Pretty much, you know, just about everybody in here, and we got such a great community, and I feel very honored to be a part of it, help, and watch it grow, and very proud of the product that we have. We have a great team that we have. Going to continue growth and move on into a bigger, better, brighter future. The Valley Across the Bay stands to do nothing but grow, be a great enterprise, and one of the jewels of the many jewels that the city has to offer. Thank you very much, you guys. Have a good one. Now it gets real. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
I think I have a little scared when we sit down. Next on the agenda is the city manager's report, and for council, you can turn to page seven of your packet, or folks watching at home for the start of that report. Madam City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I touched on the community jails, you know, the jails also known as state jails operated by municipalities, and the funding increase that is included in the House bill, and then a less of an increase in the Senate bill, or at least that's what they have talked about. It actually matches in the Senate, but I've heard that it's going to be cut by $2 million. And another part of what they've added in the bill is an additional position in the Department of Corrections that deals directly with the municipal jails, which I think is a really big step forward, because we will actually have someone to talk to about our contracts, and someone to deal with on our contracts. I do think this is a step forward. This does not fully fund all of the jails, but it is a big step forward, and I think a key part will be the contracts. So continuing to watch those bills as they move forward, and there is support from all of our legislators. They're fully supportive of that. I'm also watching the railroad bill, and in my report I said it stalled a little bit. Actually, it's picked up again. Again, our legislators are fully in support and are watching the bill. I contacted our lobbyist and said, you know, keep on going and keep me informed. I want to testify on this, and if necessary, it will be in person because of the importance to Seward. So that's moving along. The audit team was here last week, and they'll be back at the beginning of May, and that went very, very well, thanks to the finance department and then the Carmen Jackson team assisting. We do continue with the supply chain issues. As you saw, you approved the vehicles. Thank you. I think this might have been the fourth approval on police vehicles. Hopefully, we're getting them this time. So thank you for approving that. You will notice something that you, well, you haven't had this in your packet for all year, and I apologize for that, are the city financials. The finance department and Carmen Jackson team are really working on making sure they're 100% accurate, and there were some inputting issues that have thrown off the financials, but they're working to correct those. And I should have at least the actuals later in this week, and then full financials for your next packet. That's the goal. So we are working on that. I do really appreciate how the attention to detail and absolutely not wanting to put out anything that is inaccurate. So I do appreciate that. The electric bond has closed, and it has funded. It is in our, one of our accounts, and I'm happy to have that process completed, and we can move on from there. And that's all I have. And if there's any questions from...
Any questions for City Manager?
I have three questions, I guess, at this point. I know that Hyper is providing monthly financial reports to administration. Is there a way that we can request that they be included in our packet within the city manager's report? I think that would be important to make sure that that's being included. And then I know, you know, we got final sales tax numbers from, you know, 2021. Can you talk about what your plans are, you know, as we're moving in audit, you know, if we're going to have an adjustment resolution, or what that's going to look like?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's a range of possible increase over what we budgeted, anywhere from $1 to $2 million. And this is where the Carmen Jackson team is digging in to make sure this, all these numbers are really accurate. And when we get the, all of those numbers, there will be a resolution before you so that the council can formally move the money to a fund. It's currently sitting in a cash account, and we want to move that. Most likely, my recommendation, we move it to general fund reserve and appropriate it to there. Then I, after that, move forward with identifying, depending on the fund balance, the expense of what we want to spend it on. So the first step will be the resolution, moving the money to the fund, and then we'll go from there. I'm hoping that's the next meeting. It may be the meeting after, but I'm hoping it's the next meeting.
And then, based on community comments, you know, I would just like us to go back and double-check. I know the harbor master's here. I'm not looking for an answer tonight, but the Resurrection Bay Seafoods, just if we could triple-double-check. I know that we were just moving the leases forward from previous historical, but could we take another look at that and make sure that our understanding is correct? I know that did go through the attorney, but if you could just check that and get back to council, that would be helpful.
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else? Great. Again, you know, I know earlier when we were having our special meeting, Council Member Wells mentioned, you know, a lot of good information in that packet for the public. If the public's ever looking to see what's going on at the city, just look through the city manager's report in our packets. It's very helpful. And it's also helpful that we don't have to talk about everything at every meeting, but people can go to that packet and look at those documents. And there is a button at the bottom of the webpage that will get you to that packet quickly, so you don't have to dial down in. So that was probably too much, but thank you for a thorough city manager report. Next on the agenda is other reports and announcements, and I'm going to be, we're going to be doing five minutes each, so you better start my clock for me. Travel report for D.C. legislative meetings, Mayor Terry, and Council Members Osenda, Council Members Consegrado, and also the city manager Kane. I want to talk to you about our meetings. We were there from April 5 through 7. I'll start off, and then we'll let the other folks add to that. You know, our first meeting was with Senator Murkowski. This is a little side note, because it's interesting. We were waiting in her office, and she wanted to stay close to the drills for voting. So we were actually escorted in the back way, and we were in her, the private offices, the hideout offices, that they call them. So this was not a public space. She made it a priority to meet with us. She's a friend of Seward. We talked about infrastructure. We thanked her for the tunnel, you know, what our needs are in Seward. And she was instrumental in getting the federal grant symposium, so we talked to her about that. Her assistant, or her staffer, Lucas, was there. We were able to talk to him about that symposium. And, you know, it was just a good meeting because she was very instrumental in having that tunnel move forward. And then, again, the infrastructure grants and what those priorities would be. Next, we met with the minority staff director, the House Coast Guard and Maritime Administration, and he was one of the longest-working administrators in the Coast Guard on D.C. So he had a long history. We talked to him about our FRC coming, and we also have talked to him about our icebreaker. You know, Seward would like to have an icebreaker, and we've been working closely with Sullivan's office ever since Harbor Master Regis was the acting city manager and getting information to Sullivan's office. So that was a good meeting. He had a lot of background information. Then we met with Lucas directly, and that was, again, about the symposium, looking at those federal grant opportunities. And then Senator Sullivan, that was our last meeting on Tuesday, April 5. Again, Coast Guard was a big, is a big interest of him. There's currently three icebreakers in the pipe, and so two of those, he will say, are designated for Seattle. Coast Guard will say all three, but he won't admit to that. He won't, he won't, he would like to see that third one be stationed in Alaska, and Seward's definitely on the list. We provided him with a number of project sheets regarding that. It just makes sense with our deep draft capability, ice-free on-the-road system. You know, it might be a long shot, but, you know, longer shots have been made. So we are definitely building a foundation that Seward would like to have that icebreaker. The next morning, you know, I should have said we start each morning with a coordination breakfast to meet with our very good lobbyists. Our first meeting was then at the Coast Guard headquarters. Again, we talked about FRC, and I want to put a note of caution to council. Something new that I hadn't heard was that, you know, our FRC is initially going to go to Kodiak, which they knew my distress at that, and that I was not happy, and they had it back... a backpedal, but they have concerns that there won't be housing. So they think that they'll first have to deploy the new FRC to Kodiak, and then it will come here later. And I, they're having their housing folks come. We will meet with them. We've already made those connections, and we, as a community, are going to do everything that we need to do to make sure the infrastructure is here so they don't have to go to Kodiak first if they come straight here. And again, they knew that I was not happy about that. We spoke about the icebreaker with that group also, and we talked about childcare and their needs. So it was a good meeting. Most of those folks in that meeting had been in Seward before, and I need to talk faster. The next meeting we had was with the Corps of Engineers, talking more about the tunnel. We were able to meet the person that got all the permits in place, and we were able to thank her. So we would not have got that 185 million. There's a lot of people on the team for that, not only our legislators and our lobbyists and the work that we did locally, but she made sure that all the permitting was in place so that money could be issued. So we thanked her. And then our final meeting of that day was with the Department of Energy. We met specifically with those folks to talk about our heat loop project, and they went through all the grant possibilities. It really doesn't fit into what they're doing, but they gave us some avenues, and they're going to start working with the lobbyists and provide information to us on possibilities, whether we consider that a hydro project, you know, there's some ways that we can fit that square into a round hole. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Osenga to see if he has any additions, and then to the City Manager.
That was actually a very concise telling there. I don't really have anything to add other than, I think that these are very important meetings that we have when we go there. You tend to put a face to a group, that's a good thing. So we, I think we represented well the lobbyist and Mayor Terry and, oh my God, the City Manager. They represented well, and they presented what our concerns were and our priorities in a very concise manner, and I think that we were able to pick up on a few things that maybe we weren't quite privy to in the beginning of all of these things that she had discussed. But very important, very good, and I think it was just a great opportunity for us to get, for them to get to know us.
I agree with that. And as Mayor Terry said, and we went to the back room with Lisa Murkowski, and that, you know, is an event itself, but also her attention to us while we were in the room. She and her staff members really listened to everything we had to say, and there is a technical term that's being used. I call it the carve-out appropriations. So she wanted us to submit some projects to her directly to be included in a possible direct appropriation through her. So there were two that we highlighted. Our lobbyists submitted more than that, based on her interest in some of our projects. So it was nice to have that face-to-face because I don't know if we would have gone as deep with the projects and put as much in, but based on her interest, we decided to just keep on going with that. So I really appreciated that visit as well. Probably, I'm just going to go with the highlights for me. Meeting then, Senator Sullivan, that last meeting of the day, again, about the icebreaker. He very much wants the icebreaker here, and he presented to the House and Senate last week, I believe it was, and while he was presenting, I emailed all of our legislators and said, "So we're ready. We want it." And one of them emailed back and said, "Yes, but you have a housing issue." I said, "Yes, but you can help us because we need water, sewer, infrastructure money, so let's work together on this." So I'm going to continue that angle. Everyone knows that we need housing, and to make that happen, we need the infrastructure, and we're all working on that to make that happen. So, but it, and so it was good to have that meeting. And also with the Coast Guard, as far as the connection for the housing, my fear was they're going to call next week and say, "Hey, we have all these people coming, and we need houses. What can you do?" So that's not how it's going to work. They'll be here in August to do a tour and make some decisions. And I do agree with the mayor that they want to be here, and we need to help them to get here before they go to Kodiak, because the biggest concern is, once they get in Kodiak, they're comfortable, they're not going to come. It was reiterated to us that they are coming to Seward, but, you know. So we need to get them here and make sure that they get here right away.
Yeah, and I don't want to mislead people. Like, I even made the comment, "Is possession 9/10 of the law?" And they say, "No, we want to be in Seward. We will be there," but, you know, I'd rather them come here without any stops in between.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So those are the highlights for me, as far as, I think that you laid it out well, and those are the highlights for me.
Are there any questions from council? You know, I appreciate citizens' confidence, and I just want the citizens to know that we don't take it lightly, spending taxpayer dollars to travel. We did spend long days, you know, made sure to capitalize on every chance that we could meet with these folks and make it worthwhile. So I appreciate everyone's confidence in us. Thank you. Madam Chair, next on the agenda, we have first quarter 2022 reports. First on the list is the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to council and mayor. Thank you very much for all of this, because it's quite a big chew when we get on these things and try to knock this out. So what I'm going to take a look at here is, for the months of January to April, we had seven meetings, and on April 5th, I was elected as chairman, which started surprising. I've only been on the commission for about a little over a year now. And Vanessa Verahay was elected as the vice chair. We replaced Cindy Eklund and Tom Swan. We also have three new commissioners, which are even newer than we are in this world, and that was Victoria Monaco, Brendan Hornseth, and Troy Stax. And what I'd like to say is that all of them have some incredible backgrounds. They're all very diverse. They're all new, which is going to make probably a headache for Jason over there and his team because we're always beating them up, and I'd really like to admit, you know, acknowledge that they have been phenomenal, the planning department, for us. You know, they drop everything, and they come and help us out, so I'm just thrilled with them. So with that, we have a summary of our resolutions down that we have here. We did three preliminary replats we reviewed, and two were approved and one was postponed. The first one was 22001, and that was a replat of 7A, and that was Fort Raymond subdivision. Essentially, that's the Yucashmuu property for the clinic that will be going in. The other one was another Fort Raymond subdivision replat, and that was for the long-awaited animal shelter, and so a lot of people are real happy about that coming about. So that's helpful. And the last one was deferred, I shouldn't say deferred, it was called postponed, and that was the preliminary replat of the Dairy Hill subdivision. And that was, you know, we had a lot of discussion about that, but there was a lot of answers that still hadn't been provided to us. There were so many, you know, conflicting and intervening variables on that, that we opted to postpone that for the time being and to get more answers back so we could make a better decision on that. We also approved two conditional use permits, and that one we have here is, we said, we have the, for Kayak Adventures Worldwide. It's a downtown property, and I think a lot of you know that's right near Resurrection Art and Coffee House, and they want to put a couple of apartments on it, and so it's a nice thing, another thing, to address the housing thing that we're all trying to address. And it was a real good fit, and we had no issues with that. The other one that we looked at was granting a conditional use permit to Zimmerman Investments, and that was the four-plex that he put it into, an R3 area up off of Dunham Drive. So there was a couple of, you know, things that people were talking back and forth, and there were some, you know, design things that was more drawn into us and didn't look like it was meeting the specifications, but Mr. Zimmerman was working well with the planning department and others to get that moving along, and I think we're going to be doing okay on that one. Additionally, on this here, we had one rezone that was applied, but that was also postponed. That was the Dairy Hill one as well. That was, they wanted to go from resource management to auto-commercial in one quick leap, and that was a little bit too much for us. There was too many things, I think, on there that we had to consider, and a lot of, there was a lot of opinions from the folks coming in to speak to it, so we wanted to make sure that everything's covered, and we were going to look at it. So that's given postponed. Additionally, we have Resolution 22002. Mr. Zimmerman's developer reimbursement program was approved and set by as per code, and I think, oh, of course, sorry, our planning and zoning priorities, minor detail, so we approved those on that. Then we had four work sessions, and I think a lot of the things that you had had an opportunity to look at already was our, we met on February 15th, and then on March 29th, we had our priorities, and we brought them to you. And just as a summary, again, housing, you know, that's a thing that we're going to be looking at. The municipal land inventory and the management plan review of Title 15, any updates or anything else that need to be looked on that. We will continue to, you know, review ongoing planning and zoning requirements, including the subdivision of lands, replats, conditional use permits, et cetera. And then finally, but not least, is commissioner training, because we all need that, because we're stepping all over probably the rules left and right, and fortunately, he's corralling us in, so we're in good shape there. Let's see, we had a joint work session with the Bear Creek Flood Service Board. I admit, those guys are awesome. I don't know where they come from, but I just met a lot of them, and, you know, they were just amazing, and they're going to be great to work with. They have so much knowledge, and that's great to have them with us. And I think the last one was our work session, where we discussed our comprehensive plan. I'll be finishing here in just a sec. And Jason did a great job of giving us an overview on that. The commissioners have gone back to their homes and taken a look at that and seeing what we need to do to keep us on course and going forward from there. And then finally, the short-term rentals. That was another thing during that, and we will continue to chew on that and try to address all the moving parts in that as well. So sorry to go over a little bit, but that is our quick report. Thank you.
Thank you, my manager. Does anyone have any questions for PNC? Thank you so much. That was a good report. Thank you for your help.
Thanks.
Next on the agenda is Port and Commerce Advisory Board.
Hi, Brandy Reagan with the Port Advisory and Commerce Board. Thanks for the time to speak. Sorry I missed my scheduled time at the last meeting. I was out sick for the last two weeks, but I'm finally feeling better. I just recently joined PACAB. My first meeting was in January, and I was elected chair the next meeting after that. So I'm kind of learning as we're going along. We do have another member that joined after me, Fred Worles, is also a recent addition, which brings us up to a full commission, which apparently has been kind of short for the last year, so we were excited about that. We also approved our priorities list, and when we were going through our priorities list, and since then, we've had some really good discussion, I think, on the role of PACAB. If you look at it historically, there's a pretty big mission there, and when we had our joint work session, we spoke with you directly about just asking you to also review our priorities and make sure that PACAB as a board is doing the work that you want, that we're directed in the right direction. So some of that work that we've done just so far this year, we reviewed the harbor tariffs and rates, and some of those are increasing for the first time in a long time, so I think that was really timely. We talked about the SMIC plan and reviewed that, spent some time there. We talked about the washdown station that was mentioned earlier tonight, and actually went pretty in detail into that whole planning process, allowed some citizen comment on some concerns there and got to the bottom of those, which I think is really healthy for the community. Also, the dock expansion that's happening, and there were some community concerns there that were also addressed through the PACAB meetings. We then, we touched for a little while on the heat loop program, both the program itself, where it was in development, kind of where the city stood on it. Once again, a lot of input from the community on that. One of the things that came out of that is the resolution that created the task force to look into additional funding opportunities for the heat loop project. That board or that commission was appointed at our work session last week, and they will continue to meet throughout the next couple of months, ending in December unless we decide to extend that. So I'm glad that some community members have that opportunity to weigh in and be a part of that project. The biggest thing that took up the most of our time for the last five months has been the housing issue. And so at almost every meeting, whether it was a work session or a regular meeting, we had somebody come in and speak to us about how housing is impacting their part of the community. We heard specifically from ABTEC, from the Sea Life Center. We heard from the local high school. We heard from a local Realtor. We heard from somebody who works in realty and also has worked in building. And so we got to hear firsthand how the lack of housing has impacted different parts of the community, and we've been asked quite a bit what we're going to do with that. I think, I think the most important thing was that we allowed this a place for the community to come and have a voice. We all know there's a housing issue, and there's a lot of discussion about whether it's Airbnb, is it, you know, there's a lot of talk about why there's a housing issue, but actually getting into the meat of how that housing issue is affecting local businesses and people and schools on a day-to-day basis, I think, was incredibly valuable. So those things will be gathered together. I think we're hoping to suggest some kind of community meeting then and make more of that available to them. I don't know what the final output of that will be. I know there are members of the board that feel like we didn't finish because we wanted to try to get everything in before our summer break, so we quit having those speakers come. But as we all know, it's a huge thing that affects the entire community, and so that's where we are now.
Great. Thank you so much. Is there any questions for the chair of that board? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great. And next on the agenda is Historic Preservation Commission.
Good evening, Mayor and fellow council members. So we began by making our annual review to you, the council, and we wrote our annual priorities list out to be included in each packet to keep us on track. We had a joint work session with council on our 2022 priorities resolution, and there were edits needed, and the administration and council's approval really improved upon that resolution, so we thank you for that. We continued our work on the historic overlay. We did a resolution on rebranding it as a Historic Business District and working on a column to the land use table for historic preservation. The resolution came before council for discussion, where it was determined that an H Historic Business District is unnecessary. We wrote a resolution to keep the CLG Grant 20005 donor monies for the purchase of Seward Historic walking tour maps. We updated the Seward's Day Proclamation. We continue updating the Seward Historic Inventory List, which is submitted each August to SHPO, that is, the State Historic Preservation Office. We are continuing work on our Historic Preservation booklet for the public, once it is approved by Planning and Zoning and the council. Wrote and submitted our annual CLG report to SHPO. Wrote a letter of support for Fort McGillvery to be listed on the National Register of Historic Places. We updated the National Historic Preservation Month Proclamation. Voted to extend Historic Preservation Awards to May 11th, awards to be presented by council on May 23rd. We reviewed our 2022 HP budget. We have ongoing discussion of Hoven Park Flower urns, planting additional historic lilac bushes, historic rose bushes, and the purchase and placement of benches. We declined a CLG match for training at the National Alliance of Preservation Commissions due to busy summer schedules for each commissioner. And the final three of our Historic Narrative signs will be installed the first week of May on the 3rd and 4th. And Commissioner Benoit did some research on the map costs and what's needed. So the Chamber of Commerce expects 250,000 visitors this year and recommends that we have 100,000 maps printed to meet the expected need. Even if we spend the 7,200, which we hope will be allowed to be utilized for these maps, that does not meet the expected need of 100,000 maps for the season. So it's our hope that we'll be able to utilize that 7,200 from the donors. And on a personal but chair position... And on a personal but chair position, at the April 11th meeting, I disrupted the meeting and I spoke pretty badly. And I just want to apologize to you for that. And just on another note, the Bear Creek Flood Service Area will be having their permitting day tomorrow for anybody who's interested. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next on the agenda is public hearings. We have one resolution requiring a public hearing. It's Resolution 2022-031. Madam Clerk?
Resolution 2022-031 is authorizing the sale of parcel number 14502419 containing 25.395 acres to the State of Alaska Department of Transportation and Public Facilities for the improvement project number C548570000 in improving the Seward Airport for the fair market value that has been determined to be $2,000. This resolution had public hearings and was postponed on March 14th and March 29th and is coming tonight for a third public hearing and approval.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And so we don't need a motion in a second because it's already on the floor. Is that correct?
Yes.
So I'll turn over to administration if you have any updates for us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We spoke with someone from DOT and they would like to be on site to come and meet with you, come to a council meeting and explain the need for the property, how they arrived at the fair market value and give further details. They're unable to be here until June 13th and so I would request that be postponed until that time.
Okay. So we'll ask administration questions, but the first thing we're going to do is go out to public hearing. Madam Clerk, does anyone sign in for public hearing?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item for public hearing? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearings. And I'll turn it over to administration again for questions by council. And I have two things that are maybe questions and comments, but I noticed, I know you've asked for us to postpone it and we will, you know, vote on that once we get a motion in a second. But if it does get postponed, do they plan on answering the questions that we asked them?
They do plan on answering the questions and that's why they want to be here in person. They want to be able to give more complete details of the questions, yes.
Are there any other questions for administration? I do want to speak to the postponement, but I'll make the motion to postpone Resolution 2022-031 to June 13th.
I'll second that.
So based on, specific to the postponement, I would be willing to vote for that postponement, but I do want to request from them that they provide those answers prior to that meeting to our questions. And then also I know that there's been a private parcel sold in conjunction with this property and it went for a larger amount. So I would like to see our property reappraised, knowing that maybe a closer comparable has now been sold. So I know with appraisals, I would assume that whoever they got to appraise the property could do an addendum, like it's not like they would have to, you know, it wouldn't be the same cost. They already have the comparables. But I would like to see that newest property that was sold included in an appraisal because that went for more than what they're offering us. So I would, that's a question in addition I would want to see before that or included in writing before that June 13th.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments for? Okay, Madam Clerk, voting on the postponement?
Voting on the motion to postpone Resolution 031 to June 13th. McClure?
Yes.
Demas?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
Resolution has been postponed.
Thank you. Unfinished business items, Resolution 2022-052.
Resolution 2022-052 is authorizing the city manager to enter into a three-year sole-source agreement with T2 Systems to provide parking enforcement and permit management software in an amount not to exceed $31,297 in appropriating funds. This resolution was postponed from April 11th, 2022. Your main motion is back on the floor.
So I'll turn it over to administration.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm requesting that it be postponed to the main ninth meeting to give us more time to get the answers to the questions.
I'll go ahead and then to postpone Resolution 2022-052 to May 9th.
I'll second it.
I mean, I think that's fair. I'd like to still have those answers, so I think that makes sense. Is there any other discussion? Madam Clerk, could we call for a vote, please?
Voting on the motion to postpone Resolution 052 to May 9th. Osenga?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Demas?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Resolution 2022-055.
Resolution 2022-055 is authorizing the city manager to enter into fourth agreements with cruise line corporations for the purpose of satisfying requirements of the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention to allow cruise ships that have opted into the program or cruise lines operating in U.S. waters to visit the port of Seward in the calendar year 2022.
And before we have a motion in a second, I would like to pass the gavel to the vice mayor for ruling on if I have a substantial financial interest. And I just want to read from our code that we adopted in 2021. A substantial financial interest means a financial interest that would result in a precutiousary gain or loss exceeding $1,000 in a single transaction or more than $5,000 in the aggregate in 12 consecutive months. And while I work for the railroad, I would not have a substantial financial interest because whether there's cruise ships or not, I keep my position at the railroad. So I'm looking for a ruling on that.
I would rule you do not have a conflict on this.
Thank you.
If there's any objection?
So based on no objection, however, I also agree I do not have a substantial financial interest. But regardless of that, in our charter, each member, so I'm compelled to vote on each question that I don't have a direct or indirect financial interest on. However, I can be excused by the affirmative vote of all remaining members to be able to vote on the question. So I'm asking my fellow council members on the dais. Because of the nature of this, I don't want to have any sort of shadow or taint over this decision, so I'm asking for an affirmative that I can be excused from this vote, so I'm not compelled to vote on this measure even though I don't have a substantial financial interest. So I don't believe we need a motion. I think we just need a voice vote, a yes or no, if you will excuse me from voting on this resolution.
Voting on whether to excuse Mayor Terry from voting on this resolution. If you answer yes, you are excusing. Demas?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
And Wells?
Yes.
So council has approved.
I still have the gavel. So we'd like an administration report, please.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, acting as mayor. I didn't know where to go. I wasn't quite.
Oh, you're right. We never did that. I thought I had already. Yes, I'll need a motion to approve Resolution 2022-055 in a second.
I move for the approval of Resolution 2022-055.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded now, administration report.
Thank you. The resolution authors, excuse me, authorizes me to sign these agreements and I can tell you I received about five of them today. And they're required to receive municipal approval of their agreements. There's one in your packet. This is, you are not approving the, sure, yeah, you're not approving Royal Caribbean's, but this is an example of what is being received. And I can tell you they're very boilerplate. They follow this format. And so that is what you're authorizing me to sign these, as they are required to have them in place.
That being said, are there questions related to this or comments? This is just something that other communities are having to do also, right?
All coastal communities that have cruise ships.
That's received cruise ships. So it's just a, it's a formality really because of COVID restrictions and such. Any comments, discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, I think we're ready for a vote.
Voting on the approval of Resolution 055. Wells?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Sorry, I should have gone first. Sorry. Osenga?
Yes.
Calhoun?
Yes.
And Demas?
Yes.
That resolution is approved.
Okay. I think I'm just going to keep this now. Yeah, I won't let it happen then. Passing the gavel. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we are now on to other new business items. Number seven, provide direction regarding the Historic Preservation CLG Grant Number 20005-Walking Tour Project. And for the council, that can be found on page 289 of your packet. And I'll turn it over to administration.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you've noticed, we started the process for boards and commissions that they're your boards and commissions, so for direction, we're coming to you directly for that. And this is regarding the solicitation of funds included in, related to the grant. There, the, as reported earlier, HP did solicit donations in the amount of $7,200. Currently, the funds are just sitting with the finance department. And if we're going to keep them, then we need to have them appropriated and then also authorize their expense. So what we, if you desire to do that, what we would do is bring the resolution, a resolution, excuse me, to you doing that, appropriating and then designating what the expense would go to. If you do not desire to do that, then the funds would be returned. So we need your direction to do any of those.
Vice Mayor?
Well, I've been following this and thinking hard, long about it, and I think that they acted in good faith with what they knew and what they were advised. People gave money for the project freely and it was, it's a good project. So I personally would like us to have a resolution that would be for them to accept and appropriate the donations. I think their plan is to use them for more maps, which I heard at their meeting that they do need. I've seen people walking the walk already, so I think this is a good thing. So that's my recommendation.
Yeah, I might just add, I also think it was a great project. I think with some staff turnover, it was good to make sure that this loop gets closed, especially with our more attention and making sure that our financial house is in order. So I'm glad that we're going back and making sure that this is done correctly and that, you know, now I think everyone's aware of moving forward, but I would like to see a resolution also. To administration, did you, I think, would you like a motion or just general consensus?
I would, I prefer a motion.
Is there any further discussion? Well, I'll go ahead and make the motion to direct administration to bring forward a resolution retaining the grant funds previously collected.
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? To administration, did you, I think you've been working with the finance department on how to approve that. Is there anything else you need from us?
No.
Okay. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Voting on the motion to bring a resolution forward. Calhoun?
Yes.
Wells?
Yes.
Demas?
Yes.
McClure?
Yes.
Osenga?
Yes.
And Mayor Terry?
Yes.
That motion is approved.
Thank you. Two items we have for information, no action required, is a deputy clerk's memo verifying timely receipt of annual financial disclosure forms. Thank you, everyone, for getting those turned in in a timely manner. And then the city clerk's travel report for attending the City Clerks Association of California Annual Conference. I know with our city clerk being the president, she's having the opportunity to see how other folks around the nation do it and bring back some good ideas for us, so I think that's helpful. Next on the agenda is citizen comments. Is there anyone liking to make comments? Hearing and seeing none. Next is council administration comments in response to citizen comments, and I'll start off with administration.
I do not have anything further. Thank you.
Councilmember Worles?
I don't have anything to add.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Calhoun?
Couple of things. First, I would like to say thank you to, there are four individuals from Public Works that came and helped the food bank get their new freezer into a very tight space. And I apologize, I don't even know the names of three, it was Michael, Blake, and Shane. I don't know the fourth one. Hopefully he'll come see me and introduce himself to me, so I will get that fourth name. But that helped out a lot. There were a lot of folks that helped out with that today, so that was a good thing. I want to appreciate the first quarter reports from the commissions and boards. A lot of good information there. Congratulations to Matt Chase. He'll get roasted later. And I wanted to thank, you know, Troy Stags for sticking in there and going forward for that borough position for us. And one thing I did want to, I did want to say, we did not approve a $20 million dollar electrical contract, just so people out there in the public realize it was a lot less than that. Actually, about half is what was approved for the bond. And not all of that has been contracted yet, so there was not a $20 million contract awarded out there for electrical stuff. Other than that, I think, thanks, everybody. Good meeting tonight. Good stuff.
Councilmember Osenga?
I'd like to start off with congratulations and good luck to Matt. I'd like to just say thank you for many years of service to the city here. And I appreciate all the boards and commissions and their reporting today and just like to acknowledge them for all the hard work that they do and just be safe out there.
Thank you. Councilmember Demas?
I think everyone covered everything.
Yeah, covered everything. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Well, I've got some stuff. Congratulations, Matt, and thanks to Troy for applying, following through on his application. And hopefully the borough will accept his entry into the wonderful world of Borough Planning Commission. I think he'll like that. Reminder that May 7th is cleanup day. It's a big deal for me. I love doing that. And I have asked that administration post somewhere very clearly where those yellow bags will be distributed because there was confusion in the last few years. They used to be distributed at AVTEC at the door and I don't know where, but people get the bags, kids get awards for picking up trash. I don't take an award, but I pick up trash. It's fun. So that's May 7th, in addition to the bike rodeo, also May 7th. And Hoven Park's been mentioned a lot. I've been watching all the commissions and HP particularly, and they've taken a big interest in fixing up Hoven Park and all the plants there. And I just wanted to give a shout out to my Uncle Sid, my mom's brother. He's passed on years ago, but he was, he had a nursery and loved plants and lived with my grandparents right there in the Solis Building. And he took care of Hoven Park for years back in the probably 50s or before. So Hoven Park is dear to my heart. And also, it was mentioned tomorrow is permitting day. And you don't have to be wanting any kind of a building permit or in the, it's sort of borough flood plain permitting and stuff, but it's really interesting, good information, and there will be people. So it's a thing to stop by and check out if anybody's interested because you can learn a lot there. I think that's all I got.
Yeah, thank you. Just want to echo the thanks to our boards and commissions. You know, the city definitely runs on volunteers and those folks are hard workers, so I want to thank them. I also want to thank everyone working on conferences. There's a number of conferences coming and it's early tourism season, so I mean, we're, they're filling a niche that, you know, there wouldn't be perhaps the same amount of visitors. So it's nice to have those conferences come to our community. And again, echo May 7th as cleanup day, so that's this coming, no, two Saturdays. And again, echo May 7th as cleanup day, so that's this coming, no, two Saturdays. So before our next meeting, but watch out for families with yellow bags out on the road. And with that, I am going to call the meeting close.